Okay, all right, call the meeting to order for two. We don't have any announcements, so we'll jump right into regular business. Item A, discussion of town manager policy questions regarding the booklet and warrant.
So when I put these together toward the end of last week, I, I, I felt pretty comfortable that what I was recommending was what you would support. And so I put together the booklet and the warrants on that basis. But before we actually go to print and have you sign them, I just wanted to make sure that, that I had that correct. So let me just summarize from the memo. The first was on the funding sources for two articles, the Lucas device and the parking rec building demo had been carried in Jenny's notebook as coming from stabilization. I felt they were more appropriate for free cash. So I changed the, you know, table to show free cash. I talked to Jenny, she was in agreement with that. They're both kind of in one respect capital, but the Lucas device just came up this year. It's not something we've been carrying on there for years. And the parking rec building demo, you know, I think Rick made a good point at CIC that is kind of related to an asset. Anyhow, so those are it for free cash. It's all really academic, especially with the transfers we're making. But that had a ripple effect through on the amounts for transfers. So your packet on page three is the revised amounts for transfers. I reviewed those with Jenny today, gave her my methodology. She agreed the numbers I provided were accurate. But we did in the, in the warrants that we have printed, we did change for each of those three articles, 15, 16, and 17 to read a sum of money rather than the specific amount. The reason being the booklet carries the FinCom's recommendations. Those were based on specific numbers. I didn't want to say they'd acted on those numbers when, if I changed the numbers. So by changing it to a sum, I, I felt it was still accurate to say the FinCom supported the article. And then we would invite them to vote prior to town meeting on the specific numbers.
So it was just those two articles?
Uh, well, the three, this transfer to school stabilization, transfer from free cash to capital and from general stabilization to capital stabilization. So those were the only questions I had in dollar amounts. Are those all agreeable to the board? All right. The next were on bylaws. The first was the ADU bylaw. Town council had recommended using the state definition of ADU verbatim. Sam was out on vacation last week, but it, it seemed to make sense to me. I did talk to Sam earlier today and he was in agreement. So in the draft booklet, it, I did change the definition of ADU comma protected to take this state statutory language verbatim. And then also town council had added a couple of clarifying words in section four, three, five of the ADU bylaw. So instead of saying an absence of six months each year will not constitute a violation of this bylaw, with Robin Stein's changes, it says an absence of six months or less each calendar year will not constitute a violation. So if those are agreeable to the board, that's what's reflected in the booklet. That's a good one. Then on the MC MoD bylaw, obviously I made the change from your vote last week to remove an allowance for an applicant to seek a waiver of affordability. And then I also made the changes from the definition of gross density to instead say density based on the specific language the state had provided. reordered those in the, in the definitions for alphabetical order and changed anywhere it said gross density in the bylaw, simply changed to say density. So with those changes, we do believe that if the bylaw is approved, it is in a form that we expect the state will approve and would not then need subsequent amendments to fix that housekeeping issue. So that was the purpose of item A on today's agenda. So if all of that is agreeable, then.
And I don't recall if you communicated that to those changes to the planning board or you plan to?
I, I, I plan to. I communicated them to Katrina earlier today. And I told her that assuming that was what came out of tonight, I'd be sending the planning board a memo to that effect and requesting that they formally update their vote based on those, the, the forms of bylaw that will actually appear in the booklet. And she, she was wholeheartedly supportive of that.
Good. Any discussion on those updates?
No.
Again, maybe in a secure this way. Because it's not on the agenda elsewhere, the vote at town meeting. I think we need to have the opportunity to have that as a private vote. I don't know if we discussed it, another category to throw that under. I don't, repeat that?
Yeah, we, there's not really an item on here.
Well, I think when we get to item B, I mean, I, I would prefer if we can stick to the warrant language just because we have the constable who's going to be here soon.
Can I just fill in Rick's?
Yeah, 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 of course.
I've been getting a lot of people very concerned about the vote at town meeting. And I'm going to request that we be prepared and probably do a written private vote. Remember we did that with the high school vote many years ago. There was a process to do it. It has to be called out in the meeting for the vote. They have to be balanced and all that. I have had people actually say if it's not that way, they won't show up at town meeting. So it's gotten very caustic out there. This is one of those few occasions when I think it would be appropriate and we'll be suggesting and pushing for. We'll talk about that and get to that section.
All right, and I'm D, review finalized and sign warrants.
So there were two housekeeping items that I sent around in red line, just referring to DPW and the culverts and one other item. Other than that, I just reordered them. Wendy and I reviewed, as I was putting it together Thursday night, there were a number of things that I felt like would flow better. So I, I put up the alternate order, the senior pack, I stuck that off to Wendy on Friday. She said she agreed. So that is what's reflected in the printed warrants, not in the ones in your packet, but in the ones that we have for your signature tonight. So it's based on this, rest on page ten.
Any concerns about that?
No.
Any other questions or concerns about the warrant? We're ready to vote to post it? Do we have to vote to post it?
You have to vote to approve it and then you can sign it. And Rich Davies will be here in a little bit to pick up the hard copies for Jim and get them a test.
I do have one question. It's just, I don't recall this from previous years. An article seven for the raising appropriate.
Oh, yeah, this is different.
We historically haven't shown. Have we listed an amount to be raised?
We have not. No, no. So this is something we talked about. I, I presented it a week or two, maybe two weeks ago when the water commissioner was here for their, for their budget review. And it's something we've talked about at a number of water commission meetings. This is actually the format that the state recommends for enterprise funds. And it's in the IGR that they issue for enterprise funds. And Jenny and I have been talking about this with the water department for at least two, if not three, budget cycles or more. And every year it's just not been the right year. Last year it was with the rate setting and it, it just, but, but it is, it's, it's.
Yeah, no, no, it makes sense. I just didn't, I didn't recall it being. And it makes, it does make sense in there because otherwise it's, you know, we're going to spend this amount of money and they don't have a clue what we're going to get.
Right. So it's, it's, it's actually a big step forward. It's something that Jenny's very happy about. I think DOR and is going to be, is going to be much happier now. And I did confirm with town council that the select board does have the authority to put the form of article that it wishes, that you wish, even though this isn't. It's the same numbers that came out of the water commission's vote and it's the same expense lines. But by specifying where the money is coming from that. It actually did come out of the document they voted, not in this form, but, but, but they haven't expressed any objection of this. So it's going to be a lot cleaner and allow both the water department and the finance department to, you know, track where the, you know, where the release are coming from. This also got rid of the need for a separate article to transfer retained earnings to balance the budget. That was going to be a separate article, but that now that's not even, because it's embedded in this.
On article four, did you use the, the number in there? Does not tie with the, this is on the CPA.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it supposed to be seventy-three? That was the original amount, but then it was corrected when Jenny did the numbers for seventy-six.
Well, so seventy, seventy-three is last year's amount. Seventy-six is projected for FY twenty-five. So I had asked Jenny today, should the seventy-three be replaced with the actual amount for the current fiscal year? But because we don't know till the end of, till the year is closed out. So the way she described it to me was that you, I, I said, should we do every year, every couple of years, do like a sweep of any monies into the trust? Because it's, obviously it's not going to be seventy-three exactly. She did confirm that was the right number to use. And she, she said something about de minimis and that you don't have to do that. If as a matter of policy, the trust wants every penny, that would be something that we should do a sweep every, every, potentially every year, but it could be a few bucks, could be every couple of years. But yeah, she said the correct number to use was the amount that had been estimated in last year's warrant for FY twenty-five revenues.
That, that makes sense to me. I think that the amount that was voted was seventy-six thousand.
I think it was. Yeah, but that's, that was, I think, yeah, it was, there was some inflating of FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six that was going on.
Okay. I did have a question on one of the special time meetings. This is the, for the library and indoor air quality. My numbers.
Six in sections.
Thank you. Yeah, so it may not be equipment, the, the purchase and installation. I mean, it may be operational, like balancing. Is that, you think that's okay to leave the language like that? Because remediation is an action. It's not like a particular thing you would buy and install.
Right.
There may be no equipment to purchase, so.
Right, yeah. Well, I tried to, so of course you haven't read the rationale yet, so why don't I read it aloud? The finance committee, because I had to retool this to reflect that. And actually, there's other language I'll, I'll point, point to later in the booklet. So the rationale reads, "The finance committee announced that recommends this article. The master PH performed testing at the library and nearly all of the actions recommended in that assessment have been completed. At this time, the building is under review by an industrial air quality specialist commissioned by the select board to undertake a thorough evaluation and offer its recommendations. The funding proposed through this article will be used to address any air quality issues in the library. This may include the removal and replacement of the subject to HVAC unit and/or other actions as necessary to ensure a healthy environment for library staff and patrons."
Yeah, that's fine. It's just if the motion is like actual purchase and install stuff, then we don't do that. I mean.
We, we could, we could do a motion that is, that is, you know, calibrated to what's actually going to happen as long as it fits within. Yeah. And then the other thing I changed is in the capital. Because there were, this and one or two other articles, there were changes subsequent to the CIC recommendations. So I had to kind of find a way to reflect that in the CIC report. And so I added a footnote for this one and for the page telecom. It said, "At the time this article was presented to the CIC, it was proposed to include replacement of one of the HVAC units serving the portion of the library. Subsequent CIC review, project scope and budget was modified to encompass interior air quality improvements to this portion of the library. The proposed improvements will result from an interior air quality assessment currently underway and may or may not include replacement of the HVAC unit and may include additional or other proposed improvements to interior air quality. Specific proposed uses of funding proposed by this warrant article, which is an amount of thirty thousand, not the twenty-five, or twenty-five million dollars by the CIC, will be presented at the special town meeting." And then I included similar language as a footnote on the page telecom to note that there was twelve thousand five hundred added subsequent to CIC review. I didn't change the numbers in the CIC report because that wasn't what they reviewed, but I put footnotes to clarify those changes.
Just comment on the footnote where you have HVAC. Is there a reason why, is there a space in there?
No.
That's just the way it prints out.
That's just, that's just the font.
That's a fancy B.
The way they canoodle like that.
Yeah, look at the G, AR.
I guess we draw a line down.
Yep.
Correctly between the two, there's no.
There's no space.
Do you dislike the wording, furniture install, purchase install?
Not that it didn't like it, but it doesn't include everything that might happen. It's not a piece of equipment remediation. It's a category of things.
I didn't have to have a problem with that.
No, but.
To state that, so.
Okay. No, the only thing would be if there's no actual equipment installation.
So isn't it, isn't there?
That language was actually added, that was one of Tim's suggestions, but he didn't, you know, he didn't know the specifics of what's going on.
So isn't there, you know, testing or analysis first and then remediation?
Well, the testing is already paid for.
Yeah, we paid for that with the reserve fund transfer.
Okay.
From FinCom.
Okay, again, it seems to me things have been going on that I don't know about. So that's fine.
Well, it was at a select board meeting with the FinCom that we asked for the transfer.
Okay.
It goes fast. I'll agree. I mean, I, I know we did agree to it too.
Yeah, no, I recall discussing. I didn't realize it was done. That's fine.
Just going to ask you about the page telecom too.
Yeah.
Wasn't there a grant coming in that's going to offset some of that? But there's no mention there.
There's not. No, I, I mean, my recommendation would be we propose the full amount because the grant letter says specifically that the grant funds are contingent on the town remaining in compliance with MBTA. So I think it'd be good at town meeting to say, hey, we have this grant and we expect the actual cost to be seventy-two thousand less than was proposed. But we recommend proposing the full amount. In the event we fall out of compliance, we're, we're going to have to repay the grant. So that, that's how I would recommend handling it. But, but if you wanted to do.
We're opening that can of worms, aren't we?
Well.
Actually, I mean, it's true.
I know, it picks us bigger than that if you get into the worms.
Yeah. So I mean, that's something we could talk about this Thursday with the, with the draft motions. You could do a motion for a reduced amount. Sometimes we've done that in the past. We've still kept the warrant with the full amount and that reduced motion is a way to draw public attention to the fact that it's a reduced cost. In this case, I would recommend, you know, proposing the full amount, but.
If MBTA passes first, this would be a good way to say see.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be nice.
Anything else on the warrants? You signed them? After reading? Were, are we ready to sign? Do we have any other questions or discussions?
I have no other.
I can motion approval, that's submitted.
Do we need to vote?
He said yes.
All in favor?
And I was to approve the annual man special funding warrants.
Item C, review listed priorities for state and local funding. The FY twenty-six general appropriations bill. Seems like they didn't give us quite as much advance notice this year.
They never give us more than a week.
I was looking last year, it was February at least.
Well, but that was from the reps office.
Oh, okay. That wasn't.
So that wasn't from the tower's office, yeah. So my, my thought, I reread earlier today what we submitted last year. Obviously, you know, the middle street bridge wouldn't go in, but other than that, I feel like it's, it's pretty, unless there's stuff you want to add, I think it's, it's probably pretty good in terms of what our current issues are.
I didn't know if some kind of climate change actually might be appropriate. Maybe that will become a standing up and going forward.
You always have to have an item on there.
You don't have to, but if you're, you know, kind of, you know, it's a bookmark for funding for.
Offensive.
Well, there's already a state grant program for that. I think it's really about state budget. So I don't know that we want the state to be raising our taxes to pay for comp plans. They went there, you bought my grants. I mean, that would be my. But I think adding something on, you know, climate change would be, would be great. Yeah, wouldn't be, wouldn't be bad idea.
What else? The culverts were on there.
So reference education funding and the flaw of the formula.
Yeah.
Middle Street Bridge, which have come out. Water capital projects funding and the lack of state support for those kinds of projects. And that pedestrian cycling infrastructure safety improvements. So we strike middle street and then write up a paragraph about climate change. I think that would be, that would be easy enough.
Okay. Any, any other suggestions on those?
I, I do think this is part of why we have gotten the earmarks we've gotten. So I do think they, you know, they.
That's, you mean actually saying something?
Yeah, yeah, because we've done something like this every year for, you know, as long as I've been here. So I, I think that's, you know, it's helpful.
I'm a long big old man here.
Yeah, almost everybody here, yeah.
Except the education.
Right.
Okay, item D, request for review and approval of the police collective bargaining agreement.
The motion will prove police. Bargaining agreement.
Any discussion?
Not a word.
Not a word.
It's a lot of work. Thanks, Chris.
Angus, because most of the credit, I just sat there and I'm shaking my head.
Sorry, sorry, not up and down.
Not all around.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Right? You have a motion to adjourn?
Sorry.
Oh, the ballot.
Should we delay that until Thursday or do we need to discuss it today?
Maybe we just share this so the reps are aware of what's going on.
Could you make a motion to add it then? Because it's not, there's nothing on the agenda. We're, we're reviewing finalized and signed warrants. That was the agenda.
The flow of town meeting is what you.
Okay, so I, I make a motion that we add to the agenda and neither of them reasonably expected, which is a suggestion that we have a secret ballot. Is that called a secret ballot?
No.
But I like that.
Written ballot, more specifically.
If you say secret ballot, pretty well dead in the lot, actually.
Specifically for the MBTA zoning.
Yes, I will second that.
All in favor? All right, Chris, you want to describe your plan and reason?
I don't have a plan yet.
Are we, you're proposing?
Yeah, there is a provision and I know that because we did it with the high school project. This is the one twenty-something years ago. It was in Merrimack. We're at the high school auditorium and people were afraid to vote because of the negative attitude. They had to pass out a ballot, you know, to fill it out, collect them. They had a tablet. It takes a lot of time. But with this, there've been an awful lot of people who are very uncomfortable who contacted me about this and asked if.
How many is an awful lot? I, I guess I'm troubled by this. I just find it disruptive and troubling.
I would conservatively say four at this point. Yeah. I could say a fifth, but that was a different conversation, which I'm surprised because nobody contacts me in general on anything since select. So the fact that this has come up, I find disturbing. And it could be because my wife is engaged in some of the conversation on Facebook with these people. So then they contact me. But the fact that people are considering not showing up to the meeting because of the nastiness and afraid to vote because of it, I think is a problem. So my suggestion is if we could do it, it would be a good idea. I know there has to be a motion made and that motion has to get voted on. We would have to be prepared to have ballots ready and because I know most people wouldn't be there with a pencil, they have a bunch of little pencils. And I sent the email to Angus. My suggestion would be when they check in, just to be prepared. You get your green card, your red card and your ballot. You get one of each and if you lose it, you don't get to vote. And that way we're not having to pass them out in the middle of the meeting if we, if the vote does is successful, you can vote that way. You'd save a good bit of time right there. So you could condense the timing. I think it's a fair request of people based on the environment I'm seeing out there.
What are the logistical challenges to that, Jim?
If everything goes as Chris says, the logistical issue would be whether or not we can move on from the article after the votes are cast. So.
Before they're counted.
Before they're counted, sorry, before the results are reported, let me put it that way. So that would be the only delay in logistics of accounting. Because just to make sure we have it accurate, we would have two people and we would break it off into groups. And, and so if we could move on from that and then the, the results can be announced later, then that'd be fine. And then we can even get maybe two counts in there to make sure we, we have the accurate amount. But if we have to wait, that would be the only concern about delay. If it doesn't go as easily as Chris suggested, we, for example, we could not go into special time meeting. That, that could absolutely be something people vote down. Or not, not to adjourn annual rather. And then people would have ballots and they may get the idea that they want to vote ballots on other things. But.
I mean, have you done this in the past? I'm just, I'm anticipating then it'll be like if, if the bylaw passes, then are people against it going to say, oh, I want to see the votes? You know, you didn't count them correctly. Whereas if everybody's raising their hand, it's pretty clear then.
Yeah, so that'd be my, that, that's why I raised the question of can results be announced af, like past? Because then I could go through two counts. I could have, I could have my workers go through multiple counts. So we can say we got this number on the first count, this number on the second count, hopefully the exact same number. So that's not the problem.
And then would you have to hold the, sorry, would you have to hold the ballots in case anybody wanted to inspect them? I just don't know if this is like a regular.
Legally, I would.
Okay.
And once the meeting is closed out, while it's, it's, it's a thirty day for, the, the rule is thirty days for a local election. So I would essentially say that is the same.
Okay.
So I would keep them for thirty days and in the, in the session.
Okay.
As far as counting, I thought about that myself. You could have, you know, they collect them, two tables. And then yes, no table. They can sort them into piles of ten. I mean, it could be done pretty crisp.
Chris, did you, did I hear you say two different colors?
No, no, you get, we always get a red and a green going here.
Oh, okay, okay. So they would have a single ballot?
Yeah, single ballot.
Everybody a white sheet of paper and two crayons. Yeah, no, sorry, I, I would have everything pre-printed.
Yeah.
Yes, no. So there, you know, we do, and by the way, I'm not wild about this idea, but we do. Every meeting, we open an article that is committee reports and keep it open. It, there isn't a vote associated with it, but we keep it open throughout, throughout the meeting. And then, and then I guess it closes at some point. Can't think of Casey specifically closing town reports, but I guess maybe just close one happily within the meeting adjournments. But I mean, there is sort of a precedence and we could do town reports during the counting. So people like just say if we, if we can't move on, I think that would be a good time waster, as it were, because.
I would say a waste.
No, I mean, it's literally. Thank you. It would literally would people just be sitting on their hands waiting and anticipating this.
I read a little bit about it at town meeting time, just, just like a quick review. You know, anyone can borrow, read it more, more closely, but, and, and I will before Thursday's meeting. But in town meeting time, it refers a little bit to electronics that more towns have gone, especially with representative town meetings, they have gone on the clickers. That's obviously got the instantaneous, you know, result. But yeah, I was going to read, read that section more, more closely. And I did give Tim a heads up that that question was likely to be discussed on Thursday at the meeting regarding motions, although obviously now with, you know, we don't know that he's going to be there.
I'm sure Casey will have. I don't think he knows.
Me, me and Jim and Rob and Casey are meeting tomorrow, so I mean, I can, I can bring this up to say it's been suggested. I, I don't know if it's, if it's. I mean, I can, I can bring this up to say it's been suggested. I, I don't know if it's, if it's something that the majority of the board is interested in pursuing or not.
Um, so this is kind of a side conversation on that. I mean, is the intent to lessen the impact? I mean, is it necessary for you to meet tomorrow with them and then also to have the full Select Board and FinCom meet on Thursday?
We've done this really as a way to like sound out.
But it, it doesn't seem to help. We still spend as much time. I, I was gonna suggest if it could be remote, then maybe they have the two chairs and you and, and Jim and uh, moderator and Town Council, and then we wouldn't have to do it on Thursday. I mean, unless you want to, you still.
To do, to do the meeting regarding motions? I'm, I'm not sure, I understand.
I, I just don't understand why we're having two separate meetings for the same purpose.
Oh, we, we just, we started doing this a couple of cycles ago, really just to give the moderator an opportunity to
Okay.
Say what the moderator feels, needs to be said, and, and it was intended to streamline the
Yeah.
That, you know, we're basically intending to, you know, uh, and, and it didn't work last year. I mean, we ended up having a long meeting.
I'm anticipating the same will be true this year. So I was just wondering if there's an opportunity if, if the moderator would be satisfied with the pre-meeting being that. I'm sure the FinCom would appreciate not having to come to another meeting, but.
Although the, I mean, the form of motions is, is so important. I, I don't want either, anyone, anyone, whether FinCom, Select Board Moderator or, or certainly council or clerk surprised at town meeting. I think it is important to go through the motions, you know, in detail and uh, also just make sure we're clear who's making them and.
Okay.
I, I, I don't know why it needs to be a long meeting. I don't think it does need to be a long meeting. We can't start till seven. Uh, so I.
Well, is that the same now? If Tim can't be there, then.
Well, we've heard, way, yeah, I mean, we booked, we booked the interviews with the auditors. We could change those. Those are scheduled for six twenty and six forty on Thursday. Uh, but we can move those earlier. But there is other business up Thursday's agenda as well.
I know, I, I mean, I, I wanna talk with you about the, the order of the agenda.
Okay.
All right, sorry, I didn't mean to be related, but not completely related. Um, yeah, so if you wanna bring it up with Casey tomorrow, just make her aware.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't wanna sidetrack the whole, the whole meeting, but I think, and I, I, well, Leonard, it's been put on the table as a suggestion. It's just like I did for Tim, yeah.
Yeah, Rick's comment. I'm not thrilled with the concept either. But when people have asked, and I'm surprised that I've heard that much on it, um.
I mean, I, it might make a difference if you look at Facebook. I'm not on it and I, somebody sent me.
Well, most of the books are taken down. Some of them very.
Yeah, John Dodger told me that. He's had to like, you know, delete several of them.
And, and to think that it's the nice stuff that's left up is devastated when you're reading it still, so, um, and taken down is even worse.
It just, it seems contrary to the whole point of town meeting, you know. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but it just seems to me like if, if you wanna vote for something, you should be willing to raise your hand and.
I think that. Not just at a national level, but at a local level, the way people approach subjects has changed to such a distasteful level that intimidates certain people. I think that's unfortunate and.
Well, which is also kind of contrary to the whole point, so.
Well, they don't still should count. They shouldn't be intimidated to not vote or not show up. So that's.
Okay.
I find it very unfortunate, I agree.
Yeah, so we're not gonna make a decision on that, right?
No.
So, but thanks for the heads up.
I just wanted, yeah, if, cause if you didn't give a heads up, there's no ballot, no pencils, it falls apart. I also don't wanna be surprised. I will more than likely make the motion if nobody else does.
Would we also put an announcement out ahead of town meetings? Some people are waiting.
That would be helpful, I think. But it still has to be voted on at town meeting.
Right, but I just don't want, people to think that we're kind of, you know.
No, I think that, that could be part, should be part of the discussion in advance.
All right.
Uh, one, one question we can get confirmation on is uh, is that uh, I, I assume that's solely town meetings option and uh, you know, I think it would be important for us to understand the scenario Jim raised of if, if someone wanted to do this for some other article. Uh, we don't wanna get flat-footed on that. Yeah, yeah, it could uh, that could be a real problem. Cause if we're pre-printing ballots that are, that's anticipating one article, one question.
It, they could just be blank, yes and no.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, okay. No, but if you've only got one, enough, you know.
Yeah.
And my, my comment there would be if somebody has that issue on another article, they should prepare you in advance.
Yeah.
For, so. Um, and again, the ballots, which I would think have to be differentiated in color. You can't have all whites and have two different ones and they get mixed up.
Wait a minute, right, yeah, right, yeah. I, I actually, I just thought another issue is if we do hand out the ballots and then they go down, people are sitting there with a bunch of ballots in their hand. So we may not be able to pre-handle the ballots.
So like we throw it out, yes.
What if people sign ballots that are filled out and it's chairs or something?
You're not signing it, doesn't matter.
I don't know, I could call and vote the question, I think. I, I'm just.
Wait, I, I, I missed that one.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't understand it there.
I mean, if there are ballots that haven't been used, is that what you're saying? That haven't been used?
Yeah, in the sense of like, I, I, now that I'm not on there yet, handing out ballots somebody has, they check in. If that ballot is not going to be used.
What do you mean, why?
Oh, like if the, if the vote is not, if, if people don't support doing a ballot and it ends up being a voice vote.
Yeah, and so what? What's the downside? So you waste some paper and, and I guess this is a literary pickup, but what else, what's the downside?
Well, how do you show that people haven't voted twice? If they don't wanna vote, they give it to their neighbor and their neighbor. I mean, I, I mean, I, we don't probably think of all kinds of.
Well, either the concept passed or it doesn't to do the.
Or a bunch of people hand their neighbor a ballot and now people have multiple ballots in their hand.
That's their problem if they're foolish. I mean, the objective is if each person getting in the door gets a ballot, because you've just handed a pile down east of aisle.
Yeah, of course you can't do that, you know.
So I think.
It would have to be tightly controlled. Checklist. I think you'd have to do it like voter registration where you check someone in, give them their ballot.
That's what I'm saying. You get your red card, your green card and your ballot. This may be needed for.
Back end of voting, they, they, they cross-reference that it was returned by someone who was given the ballot. I think you'd have to have that twice.
That would be, that'd be. That's not what we did the previous one. They just passed them all in, but I, times have changed, I'm sure. It gets sticky. Jim will figure out.
I can use a QR code for this.
Uh, it, I think there was, there was.